All right, I call the meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, open meeting of Wednesday, March 19th, 2025, to order at 6:32 PM. Before we begin the meeting, I would just like to indicate that the public hearing for the FY26 budget has been rescheduled for a virtual meeting on Tuesday, March 25th, at 8 o'clock PM. At this time, I will entertain any audience sharing or public comment. I would also like to indicate that we have one... Sorry? I'm sorry, Paul.
I just read the editorial in The Harbinger about navigating the noise, the idea of just vetting your news sources, and I couldn't agree more with this. As a journalist by training, I mean, I think that's one of the biggest problems we have in this country right now. Everything's in their own bubble, and that's all they get. So, kudos to the Harvard your team for well timed and touring.
I'm cheering that along here currently in the New York Stadium, the Public and Public Association here. I'm really proud of it.
Great. Thank you, Paul. I would also just like to remind the audience that we have one remote member, Joan Frank. Joan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you, Joan. All right, at this time, I'd like to move on to action on minutes. I am looking for a motion to approve the Audit Subcommittee meeting minutes of March 18th, 2024, the Capital Planning Subcommittee meeting minutes of November 18th, 2024, the Operational Budget Subcommittee meeting minutes of December 16th, 2024, the Audit Subcommittee meeting minutes of February 10th, 2025, the Open Meeting Minutes of February 26th, 2025, and the Operational Budget Subcommittee meeting minutes of March 5th, 2025. Moved by Paul? Seconded by John. Any discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes, the motion passes unanimously. On to educational policy. There is none at this time. And next is the legislative update, new business.
So, I did include a co-ot letter by the Mass Association of School Superintendent, the Mass Association of Regional Schools, and the Massachusetts School Business Officials. They dropped a letter for districts to use to send to their legislative delegation requesting that the one-time FY24 Share Act surplus funding go to the FY26 budget line item increases to offset some of the increased costs that districts are seeing. So, that letter is linked in the memo that I did send, and that has been sent to North borough/Southborough Legislative Delegation. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the World Languages Department presentation.
So, welcome Emily Squares, who's the department chair for the World Languages Department. She's going to share some of the things and the mission we're doing. So, presenting here...
Emily, do you want to sit in this?
Yeah. It's all the way through your head. And then it's hanging off to the ceiling.
Yep. Whatever you're comfortable doing. You can stand. Okay. I was missing that. There you go. You need to stand. Yes. Hi, thank you for having me here again. I'm glad Mr. Vettas said I am Emily Squares, the department chair of the World Languages Department here at the high school. And so, I'm here to update you on what has been happening since the last time I was here, two years ago, with a blink of an eye. So, this is a list of our teachers, has not changed much. And once again, I am joined by Mrs. Augustina Harmon. She is a Spanish teacher, and she's teaching levels one, two, and three. So, she wanted to come and support, and we appreciate her presence tonight. And then, you can see, we have proudly, we've always had French, Spanish, and Latin, and I am proud to start to add Portuguese because we have added Portuguese for heritage students, which I'll get to in a couple of minutes. Oh, for right now. So, the last time I was here, we had just proposed, and we were, the next, in the incoming school year, we were going to implement Portuguese for Heritage Learners 1, which started last year. And this year, we have added Portuguese for Heritage Learners 2, so that those students can have, if possible, two years of the language for, you know, the transcript purposes and completion. We do have Spanish for Heritage Learners. We have not run it yet. We are hoping, once again this year, to have a sufficient amount of students to have the class. So, we're still working on that, hoping for that. But Portuguese 1 and 2 have had a big success to start. So, I can also give you a teeny bit of information about what the classes look like. And so, one of our newer teachers, Ms. Smith, is doing Portuguese for Heritage Learners 1. And so, she has been working with students. So, an important thing to understand when we're talking about the heritage classes is that the small group of students that we have, their proficiency levels, especially for their literacy skills, vary widely. And so, the focus of the class is to help these students kind of have their literacy skills, reading and writing, kind of come up to meet their output skills, which are both listening, speaking, and listening, because they're grown up and they've had that as in their surroundings for so long. So, Ms. Smith, because the class is so small, she is able to do a lot of individualized attention and kind of like helping students set goals and like work on incrementally increasing their literacy skills. Another really interesting and cute fact is that it's really great because the students also help each other. There are some students who are just learning or really wanting to work on their spoken skills because they want to be able to communicate with family members who don't speak as much English, but they do speak Portuguese. And so, then we have students who are very strong in their spoken skills in Portuguese. And so, it's a really great community where the students are helping each other kind of back and forth. And so, that is something that just kind of started organically, but she's really proud of. Portuguese for Heritage 2 are the students that are continuing from last year's Portuguese for Heritage 1. And Ms. Sosa, since she kind of was the one to kind of get this program off the ground, she has really leveraged working with the library, and they're starting to build a Portuguese, kind of like the Portuguese collection, mostly for fiction, mostly for fiction, so that those students have some high interest, high interest reading for them to be able to use. So, it's really about a lot of collaboration and teamwork and working together and kind of also being able to individually meet the needs of students in that class. And my students that I invited just arrived. I just wanted to introduce them to you quickly. I will keep it concise. So, Olivia Parker and Gabby, can you stand up? So, all three of them have been my students for the last few years, not this year unfortunately. Olivia is a former EL, Rebecca Olivia. Yep, so she is trilingual. Olivia also obtained, she earned the Seal of Bilinguism in Spanish last year. And Parker also earned the Seal of Bilinguism last year in Spanish. She's been my TA this year for the first half of the school year, not anymore unfortunately. And Gabby was also my student for three years, and she is kind of, she is the example of learning Portuguese because she wants to be able to connect and work on that to communicate with her family. So, can you guys say hi? Hi. That's perfect timing. So, that is...
Yes, please, thank you.
So, to continue, I showed this last time I was here, but I did want to show again that the modes that we are using through the Massachusetts for Language Standards, I have matched them in the different other areas that we, that we are working towards in our curriculum, how they align to the district's portrait or the profile, the vision we have of students who complete our high school programs. So, I'm just kind of there for your reference, just so you could see how really what we're doing in the World Language Department with language development and proficiency really is coming alongside our students to help them with what we as a district have been hoping to see in our students as they leave our district. This is not new either. I had it last time, but just to remind you, this is the proficiency cone. And so, you can see that when we start at the beginning level, it's a teeny tiny part of the cone, and then we go through that the fastest. Most of our programming here at the high school, we spend, the students spend most of their time in intermediate. And it is our goal that they leave with a functional level of language. And so, anywhere in intermediate is going to serve them, serve that purpose for them. And then, if they continue into higher education, et cetera, then they start to get into obviously advanced language abilities. This is also another reference, and this is going to connect in a few slides to the Seal of Bilinguism results from the last two years. But, so as you can see, we have oral proficiency levels in the workplace, and the reason why the Seal of Bilinguism is awarded for intermediate high scores on all four modes is because that is indicating that this, the person who has earned the Seal of Bilinguism has a functional level of language. And at the very minimum, those are the very, like, practiced and very, like, easily anticipated environment, like, context that students would be able to navigate at the very minimum. They are certainly capable of many others, but that's just kind of to show how, what level of language we would need to be able to participate outside in the world outside of, you know, the classroom. Okay, oopsies. And then really quickly, before I get into the exciting stuff, this Making Languages Our Business was a report that was published in conjunction with ACTFO, which is the national organization that oversees our standards, and that the Massachusetts standards fall under LTI, which is Language Testing International. That's the company that we use for testing for the Seal of Bilinguism, and then Pearson is a education publisher. And so, got it? So, really, my really quick takeaways that came out of that report that I think are important is there's a growing demand for bilingual workers. Majority of US employers report a rising need for employees with foreign language skills, especially in customer service. Companies see multilingual employees as a valuable asset for expanding into new markets and improving customer relationships. Spanish does top the list of needed languages. Chinese follows that with French, Japanese, and German. And many employers are struggling to find candidates with both language proficiency and industry-specific knowledge, which leads to hiring difficulties. And then lastly, a lack of multilingual employees can have negative effects on businesses, including lost business opportunities, difficulty serving diverse customer base, and limited international growth. So, those are the main takeaways that I wanted to share because offering the Seal of Bilinguism in the district supports that our students are actually going to be able to start to fill this need that we're going to continue seeing in the working world. So, I have the information from the last two years from the Seal of Bilinguism recipients to 2023. There's 35 students who earned the Seal of Bilinguism. Nine of those earned the Seal of Bilinguism with distinction, meaning they have all advanced scores, four advanced scores. Regular Seal of Bilinguism is intermediate high scores or a mix, and so distinction is all advanced. And then you can see the languages that they earned it in in 2023. And then here in 2024, last year, we had 99 students who earned the Seal of Bilinguism, and 24 of them with distinction.
Can I ask a question now, or you want to wait till?
Oh, whatever you wish.
So, do we have stats and/or percentages on sort of how we rank other schools in the list with the percentage of students total? So, first, since we have this year, 99 students earning the Seal of EPL, S O P L, how many students total in the curriculum do we have? So, what percentage of that is, and therefore, how much is actually compared against other schools?
Last year, there were about, I'd say about 230 students total who took the Seal, who took the exam. So, that 99 of them earned the Seal of Bilinguism.
So, also 50% fail?
I wouldn't say fail. I would say that they are not obtaining the seal. That does not mean that, I wouldn't say failing, because many of those students are landing in intermediate mid, which is still, it's very close to intermediate high. It's just simply not the same to attain the seal of literacy, but they are still finishing within the intermediate range, which is ideally where we would want to see students.
If you can answer your question, I'm not aware of a place where we can match out our schools' depth of other schools.
I did attend a presentation at a conference, and I did see the department that was presenting it. But, yeah, I can delve into that.
It's more curiosity, so I don't, I don't, you don't have to even have it, but I wonder whether or not consider using that stat.
So, Emily, if a student does not pass, they can retake it?
Yes.
So, of the 214 who took it, 99 pass?
Yep, and some of those, so last year, some of those were retakes, and some students...
Next year, we'll have some more.
Yep, some students retook a section if it was a matter of between an I4 and an I5. Other students, we recommended that, so students who take it here in the school, like, within the school, within our department, are going to be your Level 4 Spanish and French, Level 4 Latin. And so, for students who have not earned it yet, we recommend, or I recommend that, I'm gearing up to do, to offer it again in a couple more weeks. And so, those students are going to come and take sections after having been in AP Spanish and Spanish 5. They've been progressing through another, like, very high, intermediate high class anyways, so I anticipate that they'll be able to.
And another way to look at this data is one out of every 11 or 12 students has achieved the Seal of Bilinguism. So, I think that is positive sign.
And the Spanish Foreigners classes, there are four, so that's about 80-something students last year, and I think it was about 68 students total for the Spanish Foreigners have achieved the Seal of Bilinguism as well. So...
Sorry, 60?
The four, Spanish Foreigners classes last year was about 80-ish students, yeah, three quarters of the Spanish, of the Spanish Foreigner students, and she earned the Seal of Bilinguism last year.
I think the other thing that you and I talked about, Emily, is just looking from 2023 to 2024. It's partially that it is more known. We don't teach Chinese, but our students who maybe are bilingual are now becoming aware that this is something they can do through the school. So, we're really working, and Emily has come to our LPAC meetings and explained this to families. So, we're really working for students to understand the opportunity this presents. So, it's relatively new data for us to have, and I think could be going forward a really helpful thing for us to look at more carefully. And we'll continue to change because it's new, it'll be, it's big growth from here to you.
Well, I also don't necessarily want to come in and say, do your students study for this, or do the teachers just study? How's it work?
So, really, I mean, as far as when we operate in the department, the test matches what you do, proficiency-wise. Students are always working on being able to talk about themselves and talking in an organized, cohesive manner and presenting writing in the same fashion. So, it's something that we're always, always working on, and we do a little bit of, kind of gear them towards a little bit of Apple Prep, but it's something that, especially in Level 4, but since we've been implementing the new state frameworks, it's actually starting to look that way through the levels, starting with Level 2 and 1. So, it's had a trickle down, and now it's going to have a trickle up. Yep. Yes. Results, good? Yes. Yeah. All right, and now the fun stuff. So, I have a lot of things to tell you about what our students have been doing. So, back in December, these are Mrs. Lawler's Spanish teacher students, these are Spanish 5 and AP. They participated in their own version of Noche de Rabinos, the Night of the Radishes, which is celebrated in Oaxaca, Mexico. And where in Oaxaca, they carve very large radishes. We have small ones, but they did different scenes, and they voted, so we did that too. They displayed them in the cap. At this, there was one that was like a Moana scene, and there was some, like, they definitely did like a holiday scene as well, so it was a wide variety, and it was very well received. It was very fun. Last year, Mrs. Lawler also organized a field trip. That was last year, this last year, 2024, 2025. Field trip to Ritmo's Dance Company, where we learned and practiced some of the Latin dances, and this year included salsa, plena, and then bachata. There's one more, and I couldn't remember, but it's very, very fun. All the students danced and participated, and it was very, very enjoyable. It's very well received. And then at the end, we ordered jempanada for them to eat, and those are also very delicious. And then, they returned to the school. Here you see some Portuguese work. On the left is, I believe, I think it is pros and cons of studying abroad or something like that. So, they're working on presenting information in an organized fashion. They're working on that in Portuguese as well. On the right-hand side, Mrs. Smith's Portuguese 1 class, they create children's books, and they're going to go read them to the tiny titans, so that the tiny titans can see in here other language as well. Right? I believe? Okay, thank you. Oh, the preschool kids, the program that we have here in the school. Here you have an example of Latin. Latin, the Latin program has adapted a new textbook series called Superani, and it was chosen because it is created by Latin teachers for Latin teachers. And so, Mr. Stain, Sean Stain, had this, which was kind of making posts based on the characters from their textbook in Latin and kind of interacting, interpersonally written that way. So, that's an example of that. French has made, we have lots of posters hanging up now, which is always very fun. So, French did some places, I'm sorry, those are tiny, places that they like to or want to visit in France and Paris. World Language Week was a couple of weeks ago at the very beginning of March, and so everybody participated in the poster contest offered by MACLO, which is the state foreign language teaching organization. And the theme this year is To Be Seal and Beyond Conveniently. So, that is one example. There's many, many posters hanging up. I just have a few. To Be Seal and Beyond, and these are exceptionally beautiful. Lots of seals and lots of space. Oops. And then, I have a couple more things, and I'm so sorry, I don't have examples to show you, but another thing that I would like to mention is that if you were to walk down, and it's something I can't take pictures of, if you were to walk down our hallways, we are always having students interacting and working with each other. They like to work in the hall, but they work with each other, and they interact in their target language. You will see teachers having conversations to help assess students and help them set goals so that they can continue with their language proficiency progress. So, that's something that you would see that I'm unable to capture for you that way. And then lastly, the Spanish Honor Society has started, they started last year, and they just did this yesterday. They started a speaking workshop for interpersonal speaking skills, and about 21 students attended yesterday. And we also had invited, or Mr. Greenwald had invited four of the ELD students who are native Spanish speakers to come and work with our students with prompts, and so the students were able to gauge, like, how well they're understood by native speaker, which is kind of one of the things that we want to help them with. So, that was a big success. And there's one more coming up at the beginning of April. That is what I have to share with you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions from the squad? Matt?
I don't know if this is a question for you or Sean. I feel like I heard from a community member that there might be a moratorium on international travel that gets approved by the school committee. And I guess, is that true? And then, too, is there a desire of the World Language Program to supplement learning with international travel or trips that support language growth?
That would probably be a...
We have a policy. The Joint Policy Subcommittee has drafted a international travel policy for the first read that will take place, we had the first read in March. So, to provide opportunities for international travel. And I'm sure the World Language Department would see that as an opportunity to provide students with opportunities to expand their language knowledge and acquisition through international travel.
It is very interesting.
We did have some community members speak on that either last spring or this fall. And as a result, the policy committee has been working on that. And then, last, the last meeting was long, so it was way down the list, but there is a policy in there for first read, so that could be coming back.
So, June will be the second read, and if it gets approved, then probably...
Is there a reason that we dropped the obvious rule?
Yes, there was a, there's a rationale. In the past, there was international travel, and there was an incident in the early 2000s.
On the list?
Yep, pretty impactful and significant to Algonquin. And there has been no international travel since. It's been a lot of conversation around re-establishment of policy. I think in 2017 and 18, it was discussed. So, we're finally now getting to a place where potentially there'll be an opportunity again.
It was mostly the lawyers that told us not to, yeah. So, we're working through that.
It also probably wasn't fully through the school.
That was through the school. It was okay. We've had a couple of situations in the past two decades that legal counsel cautioned us to continue, and now we're on a place where we've worked the legal counsel to have a positive set that meets the needs of Algonquin and also meets our legal obligations.
So, thank you. So, this Subcommittee that is working on this policy, when will this policy come out for vote?
So, it was at the last combined meeting for our first read.
It was just in the last meeting?
Yep, so that.
In the first?
Yep, so the June combined meeting.
I didn't understand about that.
There'll be a second, so June.
And if approved, Olivia, the trip next year?
Potentially, there could be.
That's something that the World Language Department wanted to promote, or would it be either qualm-based? Would there be any thought of that?
There is, there is interest on, like, for teachers and students to travel. I always get those questions on the open house night as well. I think it's certainly possible next year. I think the next year would be better just for getting, engaging interest in painting and all that stuff. But, yeah, that certainly could be near future. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say a year from this summer, there could be an international travel opportunity for students.
Paul? Yeah, I think I heard you say one of the students is here is a TA. I wasn't aware we had TAs. Could you explain what that is?
Yeah. At the high school, there are students who have taken a class, and they can come back and during, like, if they have a study, they can opt to kind of have a productive period in the day, so they assist a teacher. And Parker was in my period C, which is my 2CP class, and Parker has the Seal of Bilinguism. He has intermediate high language, actually higher than that. And so, he was a really good example for the students. He would help them with class activities, with speaking. They ask him questions, and they're working at not as high language, so he is fully capable in helping them. So, it can work out well to have a student assist, and that helps me help some of the students who may need a little bit more directed. Professor Stimson, you know, guides us while we're doing, while we're working on all our language, but, yeah.
That's a great idea.
He was very great there. I miss him.
All right, Joan?
Thank you, Chris. Emily, thank you very much for your presentation. Seeing the statistics there about the number of students from 23 to 24, the number of languages, and the number of students who achieve the level of distinction, it's tripled from 23 to 24. So, congratulations on that. And maybe just to help, it's not a comparison to the same state, John, you asked about a comparison between other schools. I will give a comparison between two states, Massachusetts, St. Connecticut. I have a friend who teaches in Westport, Connecticut, and when I shared during the summer, the numbers that we had, that I had the data from last year, we could exceed what Westport, Connecticut, had done. And I was, I was very pleased with that because I thought they would be a little bit higher because they've been doing the Seal of Bilinguism for several years. That's a, just a little comparison there. Emily, how many years have we been doing this Seal of Bilinguism for the students? Another question is, what is the benefit of this Seal when the students go to college? And is there some of this... the benefit of this seal when the students go to college? And is there some distinction that's put on their diploma that they have achieved this?
Yes, and they're all the questions I've got included. I'm really.
How many years?
Sorry. I believe that those state law passed in the late 2010s, and I think that Nicole, the member of the previous department chairs, started to get this off the ground with the test and offering a seal by literacy. So I think that there was like one small round of it. Then COVID happened. And so I also, so the last, the first year that I have data from was from 2022, like from a whole, like a range of like our classes, and then also the seniors and home languages. And so it's, it had been in the works for quite a while, like just because of everything that's happening, you know, everywhere. It's finally gotten like the momentum starting in 2022, I think. And so with the seal of by literacy, when students obtain it, they get a seal sticker on their diploma, but they also do get a digital, digital one on their transcript when it is, when they're sent out to college. But if they achieve it in their senior year, it will be put onto their final transcript that will again go to their, whatever college they're ending up at. And so reasons to how they benefit from it, I would say that the main benefit, the main benefit is that many of the Massachusetts state colleges and universities offer a significant amount of credit for students who have earned the seal of by literacy, and then a few more credits beyond that for the seal of by literacy with distinction. It was, I was very happy to see that this year UMass Amherst had listed like what they will offer for the seal of by literacy. So for instance, at UMass Amherst, students who achieve the seal of by literacy with the intermediate high scores, they're able to receive 12 credits. I don't know if it's like World Language or Humanities, whatever the case may be, but they are, they have earned already 12 credits, and they're placing themselves into the beginning of the 300 levels of language. So there's, they've already hopped up all the way into intermediate high language at the university level. And then if they have earned the seal of by literacy with distinction at UMass Amherst, they get 15, and they're actually starting up into like the three oh whatever classes. So many of the other state schools, they also offer like, on average, like nine to 12 or so. But UMass Amherst is significant. So I was very happy to see that. So the seniors, it's starting to matter to them now as they're looking at it. And they've told me that, that it's starting to matter to them now. All states offer the seal by literacy. I think eventually it will start to be able to be reciprocated. I think that if students do go out of state having earned the seal, I think they're just going to have to do a little bit of extra advocating just to kind of figure out how they can work their, what they have earned into an out-of-state school. I don't think it's impossible, but definitely significant amount of credit in many Massachusetts state colleges and universities.
Okay, thank you, Emily, and thank you for offering this to our students, which is a win-win situation. Well, I said, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Joan, you want to tell your friends in Connecticut that we have 99.
Hey, I can't wait till after this summer. Boy, am I going to be so boring.
All right. Thank you very much. And I also want to thank again Olivia, Parker, and Gabby. Congratulations on your accomplishments. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you very much for your presentation.
We just hope your TAs don't unionize.
I just want, I wanted to say one quick thank you. And Emily also did not come up in what she shared, but she plays a really big role in working with our middle school and elementary world language teachers. And has just provided a lot of leadership and support in thinking about this program, K through 12. And I'm really grateful for her expertise and her initiative in doing that, which this level beyond, we really appreciate.
Thank you. I appreciate the support that we receive. I couldn't do it without you guys either.
Thank you. All right. Keith, was there any?
We're good. We're going to continue as.
We're good as is. Okay. All right. At this time, we will have the career exploration and innovation update.
Sure. So Michelle, you want to go and order?
This is great.
Yes, I think this is just.
You want to do it? Not over here and over there? Oh, okay.
My pleasure to introduce Michelle Kalin, who is our career exploration and innovation leader. Better before briefly, but this is the first time I think we really care about her work, which is really outstanding this year, and looks like.
If you'll come back, because I also have the opportunity to chaperone the dance field trip, which is two years in a row. And it's fabulous because it's not just about dance. They learn a lot about culture and history as well. It's embedded in the dance teacher stuff. A little bit of a job perk for me that I get to see what's going on in our classrooms as well. I'm just going to talk about a few of the things that I've been working on in my time here. And one of the highlights has really been an opportunity to partner with some of our classroom teachers who have reached out to me to bring career-related speakers into the classroom. So I've given you a few examples here. One that has been pretty significant is our early childhood education teacher, Susan Muse, who runs the Tiny Titans preschool as well. Really wanted to expose her students to other careers working with children because she sometimes has students who come in who want to work with kids, but they don't want to teach necessarily. So the picture, we have two pictures kind of in the middle here of Anne Naris and Kate LeFay, who came in this year. We have a number of other professionals who came into her class in particular to talk to kids about their positions and how they work with kids as well. One of the other nice things is that both Anne and Kate are parents in the community of high school kids. So it's kind of nice for them to do that connection too. Also, Mrs. Muse's Learning for Play class, we welcomed David Bisnick, who's a former product designer from Pasgros. He had lots of toys that he kept part of his work and really kind of showed students how, you know, the design process works. It was very, very fun and very fun. And one of the exciting things for me, so he's somebody I went to high school with, so it was really exciting to see how enthusiastic he was about his work. On the bottom right, we have Tim Hadley, who owns our company based in Worcester called Monk Creative. Katie Self, who's one of our history teachers, had reached out. She teaches public speaking, and she was looking for a professional who uses public speaking as work to be able to talk to her students about public speaking, how he uses it in his work. So one nice thing is that he actually came in last year, that photo's from last year, but they realized that they actually are kind of neighbors, which is great. They made the contacts, and now she just reached out to him directly, so I'll start to be able to schedule that. So that's kind of a nice transition there. And on the top right, John Cahill teaches sports entertainment marketing. He reached out to me because he wanted to try to see if he could get somebody who works in that industry. I said, I think I might, no, like a couple of years. So I was able to get in touch with somebody from the UZOCS, who was the coordinator of learning and engagement. And he came in and spoke, St. John's grad. He came in and spoke with our students, and they, they loved it. So those are just a couple of examples of how we've been able to bring professionals into the classroom to show them that career connection. A couple of other initiatives. I know Sean's going to talk a little bit about the career expo that he and I just brought students to. So I'll leave that. But the top picture is actually a photo from this year's career expo, where students got to learn about a range of different fields. Coming in April, I'm going to be taking a group of students to a construction and trade expo, which is going to be in Marlboro. It's an event that's run on by Youth Connections, which is a nonprofit organization, to again help, help expose to construe and recruiters. I have about 20 students signed up for that right now. So I'm excited. Last year, I think I brought a lot. So the more the word spreads about different opportunities, and the more that I figure out the best ways to communicate with students and get the message out, we're able to kind of broaden these things. The last thing is kind of the big thing that I'm working on right now is planning a junior class career exploration event, or kind of mini-conference for students on June 4. Right now, I'm gathering interests from each individual student through a survey that I sent out to them to find out what their top industry cluster interests are out of the six key industry clusters. And we're inviting speakers in to represent those industry clusters and speak to students about their career. So it's kind of a big, it's a big event. I think Claire probably already filled out your survey. But that's, that's going to be on June 4, and we're excited about it.
So recently, my daughter, the sophomore, she's been involved with the school. How does the sixteen category join the junior quality of all set protocols? Is there a different system? And so, and line up the system?
Yeah. So I work pretty closely with guidance, and technically we're different departments, but we're in communication a lot. So I'm, I'm aware of the different assessments that they do with the sophomores. And we actually timed the, they used to do the, those assessments a little bit later in the year. We talked last year about pushing them a little bit earlier. So I believe they did them around December of this year. So that students could then start thinking about, okay, well, I have this information. What am I going to do with it next? What classes might, right, they're going through course registration right now. What classes might I want to take to support those interests? And think about those kinds of questions, and how might I take the next steps to explore? Does that answer your question? The next thing I'm going to talk about is going to be a thing, and I know you've heard me talk about the internship program before. Now it's really kind of coming into its own a little bit. Last summer, I launched the program with four students, and they were kind of individually picked students based on the internships that I had. Right now, spring 2025 is the first academic semester cohort. We have 11 students wanting to meet and discuss a little bit. But I'm going to point out a couple of them. Top left is Jesslyn. She is doing social media marketing for a nonprofit organization based in Worcester. This photo was taken last week because they did a youth mental health summit, and she was able to actually get excuse passances from school for the day to be able to go and work the summit and attend some of the sessions, which is really cool. Via, who is holding Marshall, the comfort dog, who I also have that, and he's a little chunky, so I'm impressed that she's holding him. She is interning at the North Pole Police Department. On the top right is Drew Spardon. He is interning with a real estate agency. So that's kind of where I did do, like, the other ones were state visits. And then the bottom right is River, and he is working at a barber shop. And that's his goal is to be a barber after he graduates. He tends to apply to Rob Roy to be able to get his training. The internship program, students can be 75 hours of internship experience. They respond to journal prompts that I provide them with. We have a canvas tile, so our things kind of done online. And then they'll also be working on a final project that showcases what they did on their internships and what they got out of their experiences. And then they'll present their, it's like a tribal board. We call it the Science Fair for Brand Internships, where we will invite the mentors and teachers, everyone's to come, you all are very welcome to come, to see what the students had on during their time. At the moment, I am meeting with the 42 applicants who apply for the four-week summer program. So I've been very busy meeting with them and just continuing to, you know, identify basements, partner with business organizations, to see where students would be able to go. Before I invite Claire Tang out, I just want to see if there are any questions specifically for me yet.
Do they have to take, how to, that's part of the problem?
To repeat them, sorry.
Just take a slot?
Yes, yes. So during that, it does take a slot in their schedule. It doesn't mean that's when they're going to their internship. Does that make sense? They, so they meet with me, and I identify, try to work with them to identify placement. Once we identify something and it's gotten set, so for the upcoming school year, or next fall, it would need to be kind of pretty much done by the end of the school year so that they know. Right. So what happens is students still register for classes every normal year. I want them to have a full schedule. If we need to put internship in and take something out, we can do that. I don't want to do it the other way around, because I don't want students to miss out on something that, or, you know, if we don't find something that's very good for them, I don't want them to sort of, yeah, you know, miss out on something in their class. So it looks a little different over the semester versus during the summer, the four weeks versus drawn up for the semester.
Well, Sharon, anecdotally, I had meeting with a student who really didn't matter, and had finished the meeting a little early because he had to report to work. And the work that he named, I guess, from her job was, was the place where he had had his summer internship. So he's reporting to work now, because part of the job is our five quotas, where he worked as an intern over the summer. And so here, we're already, I mean, one of the four students who did his summer, and all I know the others as well. But that's the kind of.
Yeah, he did get hired. He got hired from that. Yeah. I'm going to invite Claire out. Claire Tang is a junior here at Algonquin, and she's just going to talk about her internship with Becky in the North Pole South Pole School Science Department.
Yeah. So I'm Claire. I'm a junior at Algonquin. In the spring, I'm doing internship with Ms. Pellegrino in the Science Department. So the way my hybrid internship works is I do, because it's a 2.5 credit slot in my schedule, I do have a study hall period every day. So I work at school remotely for four days a week. And then on Monday afternoon, from 3:30 to 4:30, I go into the office, and I meet with Ms. Pellegrino, where I talk about my current projects that I'm working on, and upcoming potential projects, and also just like progress checks, and stuff like activities that I've been working on. So some activities that I've been working on so far are a venture insurance project and a bus procurement project. So first, for venture insurance, back when I first started my first project, for that, I would kind of reach out to all the school administrative assistants from all the North Pole, South Pole schools, and I compile information in insurance, copies of certificates of insurance, so kind of just collecting out our information about renters that are renting the areas and just places in our schools. So there's a lot of gyms, or auditorium, cafeteria for certain events, and just recent renters for this school year and kind of upcoming, I think, year. And then right now, a project I'm working on is robust procurement, where I kind of also compile information that bidders, contractors, publishers, and stuff like that, just things that they need to do, they're expected to do, or any like forms that they're required to submit and stuff like that. So kind of just picking out different things to make sure that they know what they're expected of in their contract terms, which I'm working on right now. And some skills I have developed throughout my internship so far that are really important to me are communication, collaboration, and professionalism. In both my bus procurement projects and venture insurance projects, I've had to reach out through email or phone call or something like that to third-party renters or the school administrative assistants to ask for help and compiling information, or just answering certain questions that I have and getting to know more about the schools and how they work. And through that, I feel like I developed a lot of good collaboration skills and kind of worked very closely with all of the other adults at Algonquin and the North Pole South Pole schools. And I feel like kind of going with that professionalism, integrated itself along the way through emails and phone calls. I feel like I've been a lot more comfortable kind of just sending and receiving emails and checking my emails and stuff like that all the time, kind of just staying in contact with teachers, Ms. Pellegrino, and Ms. Kalin all the time throughout the day. And then just a broad reflection on the experience, I think it's been really great and really fun so far. I feel like I've learned a lot, and I really like this opportunity because I've often learned a lot that I don't really want at school, like the venture insurance, bus procurement and stuff. And I feel like throughout my work, I'm treated like a coworker, and I feel like we're getting a lot of like good work that I can really learn from and kind of take away in any future experiences. So, yeah.
Thank you, Claire.
Any questions?
Yeah, that was awesome.
Claire, is this helping you like think about where you want to go in the future?
Yeah, for sure. So when I first found Ms. Kalin back in the summer, I was interested in a lot of different things, like maybe business, or a lot of different things. But I decided I would try out finance first, because, so I was like, oh, like maybe I'll kind of try out that. I kind of want to dive deeper into business. And through this, I felt like I kind of. And through this, I felt like I kind of, I was like, oh, yeah, I really like the stuff that I'm doing. I feel like I'm learning a lot and something like that. I feel like I want to maybe dive deeper into business. So I've also even known this came to think about a summer internship, working with maybe another type of business, like hospitality or entrepreneurship or something like that. So I feel like this has definitely given me an opportunity to base more my options and kind of like making me realize like, oh, yeah, I really do like this application.
She also applied for a four-week summer program and so I met with her, I each have her interest, maybe there was the opportunity potentially to stay where she is and I'm sort of pushing her a little bit to think about, well, you had this experience, let's try to maybe find you something a little bit different. You've got a different kind of experience in a different environment, so you can kind of have something to compare to and go in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you too. And great, great working with both Claire and how I think the process is very smooth. It's been nice because, you know, Claire and I will sit down and we'll talk about projects or potential projects and kind of flesh them out, you know, and trying to gear them based on some of our interests and also give her, I think, some different things that we do in the department. You know, next we're not, we're looking with Sunday Cox, you know, on the books. That would be the next thing I'd really like to do is have her, maybe do more of a financial project for us and that, you know, some of the things that we do in the business office, but that may be a little bit easier. So I just want to thank her for all of her hard work. She's very prompt. She's like, when she says she's going to do something, she does it right away and I think her work quality is great. It's hard for me to believe that she's a junior high school, with the quality of work that she produces. Just thank you both for.
Thank you. Great job. Back to your exploration.
Paul, the question is, sir.
You're not quite done yet. I'd like to hear a little more about the summer internship program and how that works. You said you had forty-something applicants, so what happened? Did you vet them and then just try to place them somewhere?
Yeah, so I do have some, some folks who already like, you know, want to be mentors who are interested in partnering with us for the program. So what I'm doing right now, I spent last week, this week and actually meeting one-on-one with all of the students to have to know them, took a lot of them I've never met before, get to know them, their interests, strengths, weaknesses and that sort of thing, kind of lets them through almost like a pre-interview a little bit, even though it's really a conversation. After I meet with all the students, I'm going to be doing a little bit of matching. I do tell the students, I'm not phasing you an internship. So once I identify something, so in this case, I'm using Becky as an example, I had asked if she would be interested in potentially hosting an intern. She was. I met with Claire and felt like, oh, Claire would be potentially a good fit. So, and Claire and I have worked on her resume together, so that's part of the process. And I then shared the resume with the potential mentor who then scheduled an interview with the student. I thought this was going to be stressful, right? For a chance for everybody to make sure that it's a good fit. And if the student or mentor comes away from the interview feeling like it's not a good fit, that's okay. That's what happens in the world. So I'm not placing them someplace, they do kind of have to go through the process and make sure it's a good fit for them. And then they determine that their schedule is going to be how, how a logistics student will work. So in terms of the summer program, meeting with the students helps me, and part of the reason why it was so early, student applications were in February fourteen, is so I can see where do I still need more opportunities for students, where are the industries we're seeing coming up over and over again? Because even with healthcare, business, finance, marketing, right? Not super surprising. So, you know, where are those industries and folks that I need to reach out to, I had a call with a bank today, I have another call tomorrow with a business that's interested potentially in a whole different department. So the sites that I'm on is really ongoing.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions?
And Joan, yes, Joan.
Hi, Michelle, how are you? Sorry that I went there tonight. I want to know if I may send you a contact that I have from a paramedic and a nurse who works for Patriot Ambulance. And she has a program where she is working with Marlboro High School right now, in conjunction with the Marlboro Fire Department. And the kids, the students have to go through an interview process along with their parents because it's a good commitment. And what they do is they actually, she trains them through the class and then they actually do do some ambulance calls, but at the end of this program, some of them get certified to be, I can't remember exactly what their titles would be, but this is something that goes on through the school year. So they have to be out one or two classes. So I have Kami's name and she's Assistant Director of Training and Education. And I was wondering if I could send that through an email to you and Sean Bevan and maybe that's something that you could pursue.
That would be great. And actually, I am familiar with that program because Sean, you remember Jackie from the Marlboro High School. So I'm familiar with it from the education side, from a counterpart of mine at Marlboro High. So I'd love the contact information. Thank you.
Okay, I'll send it to you in the next few more.
Thanks so much.
Any contacts welcome.
Sure, I just have a comment, but I'd just like to, you know, thank the superintendent, Mr. Bevan and you for developing this program. It's kind of been an area of interest of mine for about six years and to see it, you know, going from its conception last year and to continue to grow and to see the variety of programming available for students is tremendous and I look forward to continuing seeing it. And so I appreciate all the work you're doing to help students explore and find their passion. So thank you.
I appreciate the support and I've gotten great support from Sean and from Gray, from Stephanie, just in terms of kind of trusting my vision and supporting the vision. And so I think all of you for that as well and seeing this as an important part of the work that these students are doing.
Proud of this program, she's also done a wonderful job. And I appreciate you to the committee for supporting this. It's not the kind of thing that every school has. These schools are developing it and already schools are developing it and asking me for, you know, prescriptions of the book, she's a program. So it's been very early and we need to discuss this. So we're going to be out.
Kathleen.
Sorry, it isn't, because this was a lot, because it's so new and it's so, it's just incredible. But how do you go about recruiting mentors?
A lot of.
Or is it just your rolodex?
Part of it is that. Part of it is student-driven in terms of what their interests are. Are, you know, we are members of the Quarter Night Chamber, so I've attended events there and I've worked there. Some of it's just knowing, you know, using my LinkedIn a lot. The Career Expo that Sean will talk about, the Bank College today was based on that. I reached out to a woman from there and she put me in touch with her colleague who would be kind of in charge of something like this. So it's all, it's a lot of networking, talking to people. It's arranged, so it's better everything.
We really emphasize, Michelle, right, does this to emphasize for our students, they're ambassadors for our school, they represent our school when they're out working in the public and also they're paving the way for future internship placements, potentially for students behind them. And our students have really risen to the challenge and they understand that this is good for them, but it's, they don't look that far in developing this as, you know, community asset and community program and that their, you know, their work will set the hope for, you know, future placements potentially.
Some of it's just cold outreach by a student last summer who was interested in healthcare and can be a very tricky profession, especially for high school students. So she actually ended up interning with them in their fire department, EMS, and was able to come out along. They did a lot of teaching on W and like, they threw them from our list that are. So there, it was just being creative and thinking about how could she get some exposure while not being hands-on, although she did end up being able to put a blood pressure pump on patients. I was like, is this a she-wa? Yeah. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is the school choice discussion.
So not as exciting as Michelle's. So as the committee knows, school choice is established under master general law and schools are assumed to participate in school choice unless they opt out and withdraw, which is conducted through a public hearing. So I am recommending that the school committee withdraw from school choice for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year for the following reasons. Financial disparity, we talk about the $5,000 we receive for accepting a school choice student versus the $22,000 plus amount of cost to educate North Rose, South Rose student in Algonquin. Class size and capacity, so I think the school committee's done a great job ensuring that class sizes are manageable and relatively small, so adding school choice students would only increase class size. And for those two reasons, I am recommending that the school committee votes next month to withdraw from school choice. And the process is that next month's probably a public hearing, hear any public comment and then the school committee will pick a vote and then we'll submit that vote to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for their records.
Thank you. All right. Next is approval of grants and donations.
So we can pack it, there's a number of grants and donations. I'd like to thank Keith and Mike Gorman for a MIA grant in the amount of $10,000, which is going to offer HVAC evaluation. So thank you, Mike Gorman, for writing that grant. Then we had the NS Borough Reads last month and they, the librarians across North Rose, South Rose, the region received $1,300 in-kind donations to sponsor that event. And then Charlotte, what, the DECA program donation and.
Sure.
The granite plaque.
So you'll see in your letter, there is a, a letter documenting that we received several donations all toward DECA, that's the word, DECA costs. You see them there, they're a video event, but Alexis of North Borough, there's Christine and Watkins, Andrew Abu Realtors in North Borough. So we thank each of them and we sent a thank you note to each of them, but they're consolidated in this document. And then as well, we have a, this was another Amelia may be able to speak to, but the student council had, had to honor Mr. Walsh's memory by, it's all in fact, somewhere in a TBD location and they had Hayes Funeral Home developed a plaque and Hayes Funeral Home would have us asking, or this group's asking, wanted to leave that to us. So it was a plaque that they.
Glad you chose to do a great job of coordinating the plaque with the owner of Hayes Funeral Home and we're really grateful for their generosity and honoring Mr. Walsh's memory.
All right. I think what I'd like to do is the granite plaque appears as item D on the grants and donations. I'm going to take that as a separate motion after the other three. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the MIA grant in the amount of $10,000 for HVAC evaluation, also to approve the monetary donations in the amount of $1,300 and in-kind donations from NS Borough Reads. Also, the approval of donations from various businesses totaling $3,500 for sponsorships of the DECA program. Nvidia Bank in the amount of $500, Lexus of North Borough for $250, St. Mary's Credit Union for $1,000, Wegmans in the amount of $1,000, and Andrew Abu Realtors for $250, and Arturo's for $500. So moved by Paul, second by Kathleen. Any discussion? I would only make the comment that I've been doing this for a while now and there are definitely a lot of businesses that I see come up over and over and over again, making donations to our school community. And I think that's, that's great, the support that these businesses and organizations are showing to our, to our school. So thank you very much.
Continually.
Continually, I mean repeatedly, for sure. All right. We will have a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. The motion passes unanimously. I am looking for a motion to approve the donation of a granite plaque to the student council in memory of Richard Walsh from Hayes Funeral Home valued at $117. So moved by Kathleen?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report to the committee.
So we have Amelia with her student board.
So we'll listen. Okay. So I wanted to continue the club spotlights. So this month, I want to talk a bit about WISE, which is our Women in Science and Engineering Club. So WISE is a club that connects how women impact and are impacted by STEM with fun activities. The projects range from big to small and they're currently focusing on exploring a variety of topics with peers, such as the applications of prosthetics, the importance of women in medical testing and engineering projects. And so specifically in the bottom left of the pictures, they were making ice cream. And then another example is they were making cards in that bottom right picture. So WISE invites a lot of guest speakers, they do fun activities and it's just a great way for women, for female students to get exposure to STEM and to STEM fields. And so moving on, so what's on students' minds? So Carnival has been a big topic of discussion for a lot of students, especially seniors, because of AP site placement. Carnival was moved to a Monday, which is also the seniors' last day. So there's been a lot of talk about that. And because of new insurance update, there's going to be some different changes to Carnival this year, so that's come up, as well as the district's health policy, which will change how we serve food. So all those are things that student council and all students are kind of thinking about in regards to Carnival and how that's going to look this year. We also have course selection, which is a huge deal for underclassmen, so fun. So there's new courses every year, there's amazing returning courses, and I think that's wrapped up? Okay, so wrapping up, but so students have been working on that. And we also had the Host of Blood Drive recently, where students over sixteen had the opportunity to donate blood to benefit the lives of others and it was a great experience all around. And then the NEAS Visit, which was super fun for the students that got pulled out. They got to come out and present to the NEAS visitors. So that was fun, seeing you face around the building. Any questions?
Yes. With Carnival, please tell me you're still going to have the dunk tank.
You're going to have the dunk tank. That was a big.
Amelia, this year, you're featuring school committee members.
You're free. I'm there to be these two and we'll know you all. But so.
There's a way.
I just put a spotlight on Amelia's leadership and student council are working through these shifts and changes to Carnival. Carnival's been around for decades and they're adapting to, you know, with the landscape to just make it really fun. I think there was a period of time where we were a little bit worried about it, I feel like we, you know, we picked up some steam on really exciting features that I actually think coming out of this and will be reinvented in a way that will be.
A purpose that students won't have to pay for like lunch food this year and the past students had to pay for burgers and hot dogs and pizza. And this year, that'll all be provided for students free of cost, so that's really exciting. And I know in the past, students have like, having to leave like their wallets around if they want to go on a split and slide or something, so that's fun. And we're bringing the powder puff back from last year and that was a big hit, so that'll be really fun to continue on that tradition.
That's great. Any additional questions? Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you. If you'd like, I can just pick up and provide my personal.
That'd be great.
So just to make updates, one is the Career Expo with which Michelle Caitlin referenced and probably the last year I'll provide the update on it because it's the third year we've done it. So all the neighboring schools and their principals, as well as I do, participate in it as facilitators for these events. So I just facilitated finance center where our students, as well as Northboro, Marlboro, Valley, several students that rotate through it here from individuals in seven of the district areas associated by the, I'm on law, so students that spend more in law, like in and out of these spaces, individuals that have a bunch of those provided by Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. So this is easily the most successful year we've had, and I think next year, I probably will report on it because it's starting to become a staple of what our spring program is, because there are students of all kinds of interests, college down, but also students from. So that was an exciting development to see it start to take shape in a way that is really important. The NEASC, as I reported before, is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. I think their, their visit on March 10th through 12th, they were here on a Monday through Wednesday. Spent three days, where the first few days are spent just fully inventing themselves here in our school. And the goal of that is to complete the tenure process of review, which I've explained in the past, why we want to do it. Two years ago, we finished what was called, we did the collaborative conference report, that is the year eight of the tenure cycle. It's like probably the most intense part of that whole cycle. And in year eight, they identified some areas that we could work on, which they did. And then year 10, which just happened this past week, they, check up, let me check up on how we, what progress we've made on the big key areas, they identified. Eight individuals came out from all across New England. They're educators of all different types, and they spent three days in their school. They were set up a career resource center as a workroom, and they, they met members of this meeting, and they presented to the superintendent. They had students, and probably the highlight easily, you know, probably about it, was we created a student showcase here in this room where students came from 9th through 12th, all levels, all different content areas where students just spoke, and we produced a piece of student work, and they just talked about, you know, the rotating fashion, what they learned, what they liked about that assignment, what they loved about their school, what they loved. So it was a really, it was a really wonderful moment that I actually wish our teachers almost had an opportunity to have. And at the end of this whole process, we will receive a draft version of the report in four to six weeks. I'll have an opportunity to correct any inaccuracies or anything in that report that I have a concern about in the final report, along with our accreditation role. We probably didn't agree with our accreditation question at all. We've got a lot of very strong feedback from the committee about the work of our school, and specifically their relationships, how our students have with each other, and our students have with our adults. Our culture of our school is shown as a strength, where we will learn, develop, okay, like skills we're taught in our life, or in that same process we're in. I do want to take a moment to spotlight the Matt Gaitin, who's our assistant principal. He just started this year. I think he's been here for longer, which is a compliment, and he organized this entire, this entire visit, and just a huge amount of logistics and preparations that involved chairs and people at the system. So we're happy to chat, and I can come and see them off with what's felt like a very successful thing. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Congratulations getting through it. It is, speaking from experience, it is a long reflective process, so I'm sure a lot of good information will come from it, and a lot of highlights too, but congratulations making through it. Take a breath.
The department heads also spent a great deal of time preparing the reports.
In addition to everything else, but in addition to everything else teachers and administration does to do this is a lot. I just want to recognize that.
Thank you very much, Principal.
I thought you were going to say the highlight was the interview with the school committee member.
I think that was understood. And now they're.
All right. So continuing on with the superintendent's report, in your packet is the enrollment report as of February 14th, so no significant changes. And we are looking ahead to next year, making sure that our enrollment projections are accurate, which so far, they are holding true. And then I'll turn it over to Becky for the financial reports.
Thanks. So first, we'll discuss the line item transfers. So in the report, this included in your packet, which represents expenses from July 1st of 2024 through February 28th, 2025, there's one function code that is showing, or one new function code, let's just say, that is showing our overheads funded, and that is 4,450, which is our tech infrastructure account. And that is due to the purchase of a new district live server that is actually shared across the three districts, and that is something that John Parr and his team worked to implement over the last few months. So that's the reason for that over spending. In terms of the monthly general fund report, you can see that our bottom line, our operating balance as of February 28th is $380,000, 1.36% of the total operational budget. This does represent a decrease of about $175,000 from previous month. I will say that much of that change, and I did outline this in the committee's report, is due to some timing issues with, and the report was run compared to when we actually generated that table, and it's like I had already to recommend it previously. And then the other larger item is due to some transportation invoices that were received, these purchase orders that were entered for our athletics transportation, going away from sports. We are very close to where we have reported in previous years. Last year, we were like a 2.47, and the prior year, we were the 1.76. So we're a little bit lower than where we are for, but I think that we also have funds available to us in our transportation accounts that we plan to use to offset this operational budget. We will be making that adjustment over the coming weeks, and we'll see that requested in next month's report. So at this point, I welcome any comments, either of those two, I don't know if I can answer.
Any comments or questions? I guess I would just have a question. After making the transfer from the transportation account, will we be, and using the E and D that we've already approved for our upcoming budget, will we still be within our policy for E and D?
So the transportation money is in a separate account, it's actually in our transportation fund. We have about, we have $155,000, so that is a few of the bottom line, I want to go back to the bottom line. E and D is separate, but yes.
All right. At this time, then, I will entertain a motion to approve the FY25 budget line item transfers and the FY25 monthly general fund expenditure report until audited. Moved by John?
Second.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? All right. We'll have a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Motion passes unanimously.
So in February, we did receive our March first assessments from both the towns of Northboro and Southboro. We also received our first installment of our regional transportation funds, which was almost half of what we anticipated receiving in FY25. So we're close to being done with the third quarter of fiscal year 2025. And as you can see, that the total revenue collection is total 72.68%, so we are really in line with the projections that we set out for this year.
Does anybody have any questions on the statement of revenue? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the FY25 statement of revenue until audited. Moved by Paul.
Second.
Second by Sean. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Motion passes unanimously.
So in February, we did receive our March first assessments from both the towns of Northboro and Southboro. We also received our first installment of our regional transportation funds, which was almost half of what we anticipated receiving in FY25. So we're close to being done with the third quarter of fiscal year 2025. And as you can see, that the total revenue collection is total 72.68%, so we are really in line with the projections that we set out for this year.
Does anybody have any questions on the statement of revenue? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the FY25 statement of revenue until audited. Moved by Paul.
Second.
Second by Sean. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Motion passes unanimously.
So in February, we did receive our March first assessments from both the towns of Northboro and Southboro. We also received our first installment of our regional transportation funds, which was almost half of what we anticipated receiving in FY25. So we're close to being done with the third quarter of fiscal year 2025. And as you can see, that the total revenue collection is total 72.68%, so we are really in line with the projections that we set out for this year.
Does anybody have any questions on the statement of revenue? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the FY25 statement of revenue until audited. Moved by Paul.
Second.
Second by Sean. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, warrant articles, preparation for town meetings.
Sure. So on April 7th in Southboro, Town of South was holding this town meeting. It's a Monday evening, and the warrant article for the south coast portion of the school roof, Algonquin or portion of the school roof will be presented. So we need approval of that warrant article, and then if anyone is interested in attending and reading the article into record, then we agree. And we believe the warrant article is in effect.
Yes. Do we need to vote on the wording of that warrant article? So I will entertain a motion to approve the warrant article for, this is specifically for Southboro? Specifically for Southboro, for Algonquin Regional High School roof repair, as worded in the packet. Moved by Kathleen.
Second.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? All right. We'll have a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. The motion passes unanimously. All right. The next item on the agenda is old business. There is none at this time. Policy development and or distribution. There is none at this time. This is an opportunity now for additional public comment, either from the public or the committee. Not hearing any public comment personnel.
So it is a very brief personnel report with one edition of an ESP. So that is in your packet.
Thank you. There are no communications at this time. The approval of bills and payrolls is electronic. And agenda items for next month are school choice, public hearing and vote, mathematics department presentation, technology update, Southboro Town Meeting recap, student handbook in May, reappoint district treasurer and assistant treasurer in May, program of studies in May, election of officers in May, and health and fitness department presentation in June. Does anybody have anything they wish to add to the agenda? Matt?
I'd like to add executive session for school safety. We have asked for it before. And I just don't know if this is meant, forgive me if it's meant to be for next meeting, or if it's just like an agenda of items that we'd like to address at some point.
Okay. I think we were addressing some of that.
So we have an executive session tonight.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Forgive me.
If we don't cover all topics, we can definitely add.
All right. Certainly, if anything comes up that you want to add to the agenda, please feel free to send one in.
My apologies.
No, no apologies necessary. So at this time, we're going to have a roll call vote to enter into executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, and not convene, and not reconvene in open session. So we'll do a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Hold on a moment. Sorry. I made a, sorry. I made a motion. That's the motion I made. All right. Let's get a second on this one. Hey, Paul, are you interested in seconds?
All right.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. So, let's try this again. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. The motion passes unanimously with the two thirds, minimum two thirds majority.
All right. So now for the assessments, so we need to approve the non-exempt, the total assessment for each of the communities for Northboro and Southboro. So for Northboro, the assessment will be $15,994, which is an increase of $805,870, or a 5.33% increase over fiscal year 25 assessment. And for Southboro, the assessment is $10,07,308, which is a $615,889 increase over fiscal year 25, or a 6.51% increase. And this does include the use of $675,000 of excess and deficiency.
So move. Motion by, motion by Paul?
Seconded.
Seconded by Matt. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?